Good evening. It's 6:30 on October 10, 2023, and I'm calling this regular session of the Bastrop City Council to order... The City of Bastrop deserves the right to reconvene, recess, and realign the regular session, or called executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. We are very pleased tonight to have two young individuals, Reece Romney and Jackson Weinew, of the E-mail Elementary SWAT to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will y'all please step forward? Y'all ask, "What is SWAT?" SWAT's pretty interesting. It's made up of a club of students who are athletic and have leadership qualities. They play hard and they play fair. Y'all are up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, one and indivisible. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Let's give these kids a round of applause. Hang on, guys. Thank y'all very much. Y'all did great. Well, now I have one of our police chaplains. Dale Burke, come up and give us the invocation. Pastor Burke.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, just thank you so much that we live in a blessed community. Father, where people are wanting to come and as we're developing here to be a larger community, and there's many moving parts here. But, Lord, we thank you for each council member here, for the mayor, city manager, city attorney, each person that's called to this position with great experience, knowledge, and, Lord, I thank you tonight that you give them wisdom in all that they're doing and making the decisions that they make. Lord, I just thank you that, again, it will continue to be a blessed community where it's welcoming and, Lord, it's growing in the right way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Burke. Y'all may be seated. Pastor Burke and the other police chaplains do a great service to our community. We really appreciate that. We're going to move on to presentations. There's no mayor report tonight, nor a city council member's report. Madam City Manager, do you have a report for us?
Very, very brief report, and it's really just made up of announcements. We do have the Development Code rodeo, and I know everybody hates those words, but we are jumping right into the Development Code Revamp. That's November 14th and 15th. That is at the Hampton Inn. We are limited to 100 respondents, so we have created an e-vite. So please get on the site. It's cityofbastrop.org/coderodeo and get your slot. Lunch will be provided. We are... The council adopted a... Or I'm sorry, passed a resolution to put the economic development tax on the ballot. So that is coming up on the November election. The city has launched a website, cityofbastrop.org/streets, that gives an FAQ and also some pretty significant information about the street tax and what its intended purpose should be. We have had a lot of questions from residents asking about a plan forward, and so there is some good information on that page. And next is Boobash. Here comes Halloween. The streets in Bastrop will be overrun with children. We are taking Halloween back to downtown with a little minor tweak. We are coming up, pecan, making the turn at Spring, and we'll end up with a trunk-or-treat at the library as well as the Main Street. So if you have a nonprofit organization or an organization who is trying to raise some funds, please get with Kathy Danielson. We've got some spots along Spring Street where we'd be happy to have you. And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. All last week... Well, three days last week, council and the city manager spent in Dallas at Texas Municipal League Conference where there was lots of classes and lots of walking. So it's a... We're happy to be back with this wealth of knowledge we have. We're next moving to a proclamation. Very pleased to read this proclamation of recognizing our chamber, whereas more than 7,000 chambers of commerce in the United States distinguish themselves as the voice of business, and whereas more than 600 chambers of commerce in the state of Texas actively provide service to their communities, and whereas the work accomplished by the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce has benefited our community through their economic development, tourism promotion, and community development programs. And whereas the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce unceasingly promotes our community for quality growth and development, and whereas the business community represented to the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce has been a driving force in fostering enhanced educational opportunities, infrastructure improvements, leadership development, job creation, and a positive vision for the future. And whereas the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce in our community has and continues to seek to achieve successful results for our community in a cooperative spirit with other organizations. And whereas the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce has proudly represented the business community in Bastrop County for more than 100 years, and whereas the Bastrop Chamber has been a strong partner with the City of Bastrop in endeavors to promote and develop our local business community. Now, therefore, I, Lael Nelson, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, to hereby proclaim October 16 through the 20th, 2023, as Chamber of Commerce Week. And I will ask the President and CEO of the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce, Becky Womble, to step forward and receive this proclamation. Let's give her a round of applause.
Mr. Mayor, you might mention that she was nominated for Executive of the Year as well, Ms. Womble.
Councilmember Crouch, thanks for stating my thunder. She has also informed us that they now have 800 members. She was one of the finalists in Austin Business Journal's CEO of the Year, and she attended the TML and got to eat dinner with the members of the council. So it was pretty cool. Congratulations to all of y'all. It's always good. Thank you, Ms. Womble and your crew. We'll now go move to... There's no work session scheduled. We'll move to staff and board reports, and we'll receive a presentation on the unaudited financial report for the period ending August 31, 2023. Ms. Allen.
This is a presentation of the unaudited monthly financial reports for August. Normally, I understand that y'all receive these the month ending, so you would normally receive this information in September. However, y'all were inundated in September with budget items, so we're presenting this a little bit late, so I'll get caught up further in the months. Revenue reported for the general fund is exceeding forecast by 10.3% with sales tax at 3.3% over forecast. All other funds are performing positive to the forecast as of August, as well as all expenses are positive to budget. The water wastewater fund revenue is exceeding forecast by 5.18%. Unfortunately, expenditures are also exceeding forecast by 102%, and this is due to the delay of the opening in the new plants. The electric fund revenue is exceeding forecast by 8%, as well as the hot fund revenue is over forecast by 11.6%. I'm sorry, I'm skipping. Do y'all have any questions pertaining to the financial report?
Seeing none, have any questions with Ms. Allen? Seeing none? We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, now I'll move to item number seven, citizen comments. I have a single citizen comment for under the general comments at this point in time. Madam City Secretary, is any others besides this one?
No, Mayor.
All righty. I'll call Mr. Craig Swanson. If you'll approach the podium and give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
You bet. Good evening, council. Thanks for having me. So my name is Craig Swanson, and I live at 1327 FM 969 here in Bastrop. And my wife and I moved... Well, we opened a business here in 2012 and then moved to Bastrop, moved our family here in 2017. So as business owners, we have a lot of other friends in the community that also own businesses. And the one thing that we always wind up talking about when we get together is the challenges that we're having staffing our businesses. And so hiring and retaining enough talent to serve our community and grow our businesses is the number-one problem, just because there's simply not enough entry-level housing available, you know, here in the community. So I pulled some statistics last night just to point this out, and the average days on market for homes sold within the City of Bastrop in September was 35 days. And so equilibrium is about 180, so we're way short on those for-sale units. And then the local apartment market in Bastrop has consistently been over 98% occupied since about 2019. So it's a very real problem, and I know the leadership here, I know you guys are addressing this, but I just want to implore upon the community that when we have good Class A apartment projects that come to our community with good developers that have a history of doing good projects and a good track record that have a kind of long-term perspective in ownership, we've got to embrace them. Because if we don't, we're going to miss out on those projects, we're going to be behind on our housing again, we're not going to be able to staff our businesses the way that we need to, and the shortage is only going to get worse. And just to point out one kind of nugget, I was talking with Jean Ryman Schneider before she... When she was back at the EDC, I think she said in 2021, there were 120 schoolteachers in Bastrop ISD that couldn't live here because we didn't have enough housing for them. They're having to live as far away as San Marcos to drive in. So it's a very real problem. So I know change is hard. I know it can be scary. I know it's really easy to take a "not-in-my-backyard" kind of perspective, but I would encourage our community to not take the approach that everybody that lives in an apartment is a bad person or that's going to create problems for us. In fact, about 90% of all Americans have lived in an apartment at one time, myself included, right? And our business owners need these people, our teachers, our schools need these teachers, our hospitals need them to serve and take care of us. And I don't think we, as a community, I don't think we want to be... We don't want to take the perspective that we only want new residents or neighbors that have a $50,000 to $80,000 down payment available for a single-family home, right? And we need to create the space for the young people starting out. We need to create the space for the folks that are moving here to take all the jobs, set up before they buy a home and take the... Put down roots. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate the input and perspective. All righty. We will move on to item number eight, approval of minutes. Madam City Secretary, I'll go ahead and read this. Consider action to approve city council meetings from the September 25, 2023, boards and commissions orientation, and the September 26, 2023 special meeting, and the September 29, 2023 workshop. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee and a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to 99A. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-146 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, in a construction contract with 304 Construction LLC of Cedar Creek, Texas, in the amount of $1,46,788.73 for the construction of Financial Way Improvements Project. Authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. In front of you tonight is a construction contract for the Financial Way Improvements Project. Just a little bit of background here, this project was started with the Bastrop Economic Development, and when it was almost close to the final design of this project, we started engineering. Our staff from the city was more involved, and we were ready to bid this project. The intent of this project is to allow development in the industrial park. So the scope is to extend Jackson Street roadway and then develop the Financial Way, which is a cul-de-sac with approximately 1,000 linear feet of road. It would include water, wastewater, and drainage infrastructure. So just to give you an idea, this is Technology Drive, Business Park Drive. This is Jackson Street, so we're extending a little bit of Jackson Street, and this is the new road, Financial Way. We advertised invitation to submit bid proposals on August of the 11th and 18th of this year. We received the proposals on September 5th of this year, and the engineers... The engineer looked at the proposals and checked the references and provided recommendation to award the contract to 304 Construction LLC. The opinion of probable cost was approximately 1.95 million, and the... This contract tonight is for $1,46,783.73. We have a few representatives with us tonight. We have Adam Moit with 304 and Trace Brayton with the set engineers, our design engineer. The funding is coming from BDC. We intend to provide a notice to proceed this month. The construction is estimated to start in November and to be completed with in approximately two months. With that, we ask you that you authorize the construction contract for the Financial Way Improvements Project with 304 Construction LLC Group in the amount of $1,406,783.73.
That amount is different than the... That amount is different. That amount is higher. The zero and the four are transposed on that slide.
Okay, sorry.
Yes.
It's $1,406.
Okay, sorry.
$1,406. Colin, would you bring up that map that I sent over? I had a couple of council members want a larger map to see relative what project is So in relationship... Fabiola, can I have the pointer? Or can you point to... Can you point to Financial Way?
Yes, right here.
And that's Moka Ventures, which is in the gray above that line and over to the east.
Okay, Councilmember Corvall has laid this out. Do you have any questions for Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, my only question is, obviously, I mean, this is a good project. We've known we needed to do this for a while. We're not going to do this 1,000 feet at a time in the... I just want to...
That is the hope.
Yeah, because it's going to be a lot more expensive to do that, I would think, than to bite the bullet and do the whole thing.
Correct. Duset, who's the engineer on the project and is essentially creating a small area development plan, does have the entire loop and the rest of the southern portion of the park in design as we speak. The moving parts that have made this design difficult is, one, consistently changing EDC directors, but I'm going to put a pin in that and put that over to the side. Two, the fact that when we're out marketing the sites, we're not marketing a shovel-ready site. So a developer doesn't really know what they want. They know they want a bite of 20 acres, but not really sure what that is. And there's a good portion of this park that is not developable, at least not for traditional industrial development because of the topography and not to mention the Houston Toad. But complicating matters a little bit more is the Pine Forest Six development and is also the movie studio project. So we're trying to make sure that we cover all of the bases. Financial Way was planned long before we began to have the discussion about an area development plan, but yes, at one point in time, it was a very small bite at a time.
Councilmember Crouch.
I just wanted to commend Fabiola and her team for putting the bid package out and then all the pricing coming back within really close proximity of each other for all five bids. So I'm glad to see that instead of just negotiating some of the costs that we've been doing. So I'm glad to see that it was very competitive, and I know you wish you'd have got it for 1.4, but you'd have been in fourth place.
Sorry.
But thank you, Fabiola, for putting it all together.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify on the 1.95 probable construction cost. Is that what was anticipated the cost is going to be, or it could possibly be a change by the end of the construction?
Should not be a change. That was the engineer's opinion of probable cost based on that information available at the time.
And our bids came in lower.
Yes.
And I know it's not easy to predict, but any anticipation on delay, or you think we will have this done in two months?
I think we'll be able to do this in two months.
Okay, thank you.
Contractor is ready to start.
Okay, thank... And well, what are the contingencies if something happens on their side?
There's LDs part of the contract if they don't finish on time, but we still have time in order for Moka to start on the job. With agreement with Moka, we have some time, so we do have.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve. I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move to item 9B. Thank you, Ms. Corvall. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-147 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the city manager to accept the donation on behalf of the Bastrop Fire Department in the amount of $25,000 from the Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation for the utilization of the Bastrop Fire Department in its wildland and brush fire response. Authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for repealing clause and establishing effective date. Chief Rosales.
Mayor, council. This is a formality. We have to bring this to you as a resolution to accept this dollar amount. The only stipulation is the Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation requested that it be spent towards us, the fire department only, and that it be spent towards wildland and brush fire equipment. We currently are doing an audit of our tools and equipment right now. Some of the plans, we haven't put together a budget just yet. We're going to put together a budget, bring it to the city manager, to figure out what we're going to spend the 25,000 on. More than likely, it'll be tools, equipment, and some replacement, and then we're going to look towards some educational things as it relates to wildland and firefighting. Other than that, any questions?
We appreciate all you do. Any questions for the chief? Councilmember Lee.
Thanks, Mayor. Actually, probably it's probably more directed toward the city manager. So in just looking at this organization itself, they... Bastrop falls under their purview. Do they have any type of... Because of the services they provide for more affordable housing or help with housing, loan, do we partner with them on anything, or are they primarily partnered with the county?
They were actually going to provide assistance to Farm Street Village. When that project didn't make, they pulled out.
And that's the only one that you're aware of? So I would like to see either through our website, our DEI, or something, because they have a lot of good resources for individuals who are looking for housing, need housing, need help trying to buy a house, or need a loan that I think our residents could benefit from. So I'm glad for the $25,000. Thank you, Lord Jesus, amen. But in looking at their website, I think they could be doing... We could be using them a lot more as a resource for our residents, and I'd like to find some way for them to have access to that information, if possible.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Crouch.
What... I was just curious, what is the limit where we have to have a formality like this for the donation? Is there a dollar limit on it, or do you...
I'm going to turf that to the city attorney. That's it?
Mayor and council, there is no dollar limit. Donations to municipalities are treated just as donations to a nonprofit corporation, but depending on the dollar amount, any proposed strings that are attached to the grant, we don't want to be in the business of just accepting every donation that comes along. If at some point council wanted to set a policy saying things below a certain dollar amount could be accepted at the city manager's discretion, everything above that goes to council, that's something that you could do, but without that policy at this point, it was our recommendation to come to council.
Okay. I hope it starts a long string of donations to the fire department. So that's awesome. I'm glad. I just was curious as to the dollar amount.
Good point.
We haven't put it on the agenda yet, but we received a $1,000 donation from Bluebonnet Electric, so we'll put that on the next agenda.
So far, your wish is coming true. Okay. Any other questions for the chief or city manager? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer and a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Item 9C. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-39 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget for fiscal year 2024 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating to various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict therewith, and establishing an effective date, and move to include an October 24, 2023 city council consent agenda for a second reading. Ms. Allen.
The financial management policy states the level of budgetary control is at the fund level in all funds. When budget amendments are required between funds or between departments over 25K, they must be approved by city council through ordinance. Some of the items that we're going to bring you is some housekeeping, just to clean up, that came apparent during the budget process, and some I know the city manager had prior mentioned that we were bringing y'all regarding contracts. Budget amendment number one and number two are related. It is allocating funds from the city manager department and reallocating that to the engineer department to realign staff with the org chart. So it's a zero net change to the fund. It's simply moving the labor between the city manager's department and the engineering services. Budget amendment number three is public works park expenditure. This amendment would allocate $250,000 to a special projects expenditure line to be determined by council. Budget amendment number four is to the designated fund. This pertains to the previous item that Fire Captain Andreas... It's basically just acknowledging receipt and approving the expenditure of the fund this would incur in the designated fund. We also have an amendment for the one-time expenditure fund. This amendment for budget amendment number five pertains to engaging engineering services for the Quiet Zone project. Budget amendment number six is for the development services. Budget amendment number six is for the Development Services Fund. This pertains to staffing. We had in a vacant development engineer position that has later been filled as the Assistant Director of Engineering. This is amending the appropriate lines applicable to filling that position. Our final budget amendment pertains to the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund for Professional Services. This is contracted to create the RFP process for the Convention Center Hotel Project.
Counsel has been laid off. Any questions for staff?
Move to approve.
I have a, I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Crouch. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. We'll move to item 9D. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-153. The City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas approving a project of the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation with Accutronic Company and Accutronic Real Estate Group, the project of which consisted in the sale of real property in the provision of incentives totaling $1,890,000 by B E D C pursuant to a performance agreement, providing for recoupment of incentives paid and property granted in the event of noncompliance by Accutronic Company and Accutronic Real Estate Group, authorizing signatories and providing an effective date. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Call in next slide, please. This is the biggest amount that you saw at the, let me, I'll have to get up to the pointer. Sorry. The B E D C has had a policy to reimburse property sales. Accutronic is the last in that prior policy. When I came on board as interim EDC director, there were negotiations ongoing. We went back to the drawing board. We've brought forward at least 50 job creations before the reimbursement of that property sale is complete. This is Accutronics to the southwest of Moca. So completing technology, which is the engineering that DuSet is doing right now, will hopefully align with Accutronics being prepared to open their doors. They are building a 20,000 square foot facility. They are capital investment of at least $4 million and 50 jobs with an average salary of 56,240. This is in the B E D C's budget. It will be reimbursed over a period of five years or as determined by the EDC.
Any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Plunkett?
That, rather, if you take 10 acres out of that, does that leave much, you know, the way that it is there? I just don't want to create a, an orphaned piece of property that's not any good.
Where would the orphaned piece of property be?
Well, if, if that, you know, if that rough triangle there is less than 10 acre or if it's not acres, then I'm just curious how much is left. And I just want to make sure we don't. Is that whole?
It should be 10 acres. It's actually a little more than 10 acres, but anything that's residual and abusing for retention. There's a retention pond right, right above that. So that topography, we're going to need to be able to drain it.
Okay, good. And there won't be another lot out of that?
No, there won't be a remnant law created, no.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crouch?
On the, the payback, I know that there was a percentage or a dollar amount for every year after the initial construction piece of it. And the first year was the largest. Is there any reason that we made that year the biggest?
Recoup of capital investment by?
I think they'll need it because I don't know if they can build it for $200 a square foot. So that'll be good. And then the incentive. So as each year as they add employees, if they don't meet that employment hiring limit, do they just not get that entire incentive for that year? Okay. That's, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Plunkett? So it's all or nothing?
It is all or nothing. That's how the contract is written.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
I recall there was a discussion about using median salary instead of average. And then I see in here, the average is calculated by dropping the highest and lowest salary. I didn't recall if that was a new way to calculate it or what happened with those discussions.
No, so we use the term median in deliberations in the back, but median turned into throw out the highest and throw out the lowest. It wasn't quite median. That was the word that was used, but that's not the intended calculation. So we threw out the highest, the executive, because you didn't want that to skew the amount, and we threw out the lowest.
Any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam City Manager, for the presentation. We'll move to item 9E. Hold a public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-35. The City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas approving Ranch Road Plan Development District, changing the zoning for 24.462 acres out of the Nancy Blakey survey from P2 rural to a planned development district with a P4 mixed base zoning located at 615 West Highway 71 within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, and move to include on the October 24, 2023, city council consent agenda for a second reading. Ms. Higgins?
Good evening, Council. So this is the item that was presented last time at city council that you heard, but we're not able to make an addition due to the zoning, the notification. So we're bringing it back. It has went back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and gotten a new recommendation. So this development is located off Settlement in 71. It is commonly known as Reed Ranch. It is intended to connect Highway 71 and Settlement Drive, also connecting the Burleson East through Reed Ranch and then back to 71. The proposal is for a P4 base zoning with a planned development district overlay. And the, when coming up with this, at the first time that it went to P and Z, they had a few recommendations after listening to the public, such as the units adjacent to the residential neighborhood being limited to a maximum of two stories while the units away are allowed four stories instead of three stories across the board. There was also the connection at Jessica that was eliminated. And the setbacks along the portion of the development that abuts the residential neighborhood be relieved of the B3 code requirements so they can add in some more landscaping and kind of add more of a buffer between the houses and the apartments as well as, yeah, so they will have increased landscaping in the setback. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for this one with taking into account the original request from the developer for the impact fees was to have them waived. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended instead of waiving them entirely, to give them an 18-month, 18-month grace period instead of the 12-month that was, that is, that is required by law. And we do also have the developer here with a presentation so they can come up and then if you have any questions for them or for me or for the city manager, we can help you with that.
So they have a quick presentation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Charlie Dorssanio with Adrena Group on behalf of the applicant. I won't take up a lot of time tonight since, yeah, I know you all have already seen this before. Nice to be back this evening. Just a quick reminder, Kennedy went through this quickly as well. I did want to just put up the major thoroughfare map just to give some background. It seemed like some of the public weren't sure where this came from in the connectivity aspect. We were merely just attempting to comply with the B3 code and the thoroughfare master plan. And as we'll discuss later, we, you know, are willing to allow for the dedication of roadway connectivity through our property as well. So here's the new proposed site layout. It looks similar before, but of course Jessica Place does not connect. As you see, the buildings in the northeast, which is bottom right, they've been moved away from the property boundary, and we've added additional landscaping. We're committed to two stories in those buildings. Most of the other buildings will continue to be three stories with the option for four on the western side. And of course, you know, we're keeping our publicly accessible, privately maintained network of streets and pasos along with civic space we promised. So here's just a list of the P and Z recommendations a second time around. And then so I did want to, you know, I sent y'all an email. I wanted to just discuss our reasoning here for the roadway impact fees. You know, we know it's important to the city to plan for roadway impact fees in the future. But in honesty, when we went under contract many months ago and started this negotiation, you know, we do our due diligence based on the ordinances at the time. So this is a new would be, a new and unexpected fee that is yet to be budgeted for. And when we were planning, it came out to a number that makes the project difficult to continue with. This is also along with the fact that we will be dedicating roadways as part of the development. So we just respectfully ask that these fees be waived. You know, we're looking to be a good partner and actually Hayden Lunsford of the developer Holt Lunsford Commercial would like to speak and give a few words, you know, about his group and the project. So the request again is for a zoning change for a PDD with a P4 place type base district. We'll be, of course, be here for questions, but I wanted to give Hayden some time to speak as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Hayden Lunsford. I represent the applicant Holt Lunsford Commercial, who will be developing the site. Up to this point, you guys have been hearing from Charlie and his group, who we have used multiple times in the past to help us navigate the processes that come with zoning changes and applications to help us navigate getting through what we're going through right now. They do a great job and have represented us well, but I wanted to address you guys tonight so that you can put a face to the group that will be hopefully getting into a long-term partnership with you guys regarding this piece of land. We hope to be an integral part of the community going forward. A little background on our firm, we are a family office. My father and two older brothers work alongside me. We are not a national firm. We've been in the real estate business in Dallas, Austin, Fort Worth, and Houston for over 30 years. We do not venture outside the great state of Texas. We're a privately held company that acquires, develops, and operates best-in-class multifamily, industrial, office, and retail. Our goal is to do one to two projects per year and have those projects be our sole focus. We pride ourselves on being a do what we say shop that is intimately involved in every part of the deal. All the necessary decisions relevant to our projects are made in-house amongst family. We're excited to lock arms with you guys and the rest of the Bassherd community to hopefully deliver a best-in-class community on the site to help support the current and growing housing needs that the city is facing, given the amount of growth and jobs that are headed this way. With that in mind, I'd like to talk briefly about what makes up a best-in-class community. Regardless of use, whether it be multifamily, office, retail, or a combination, I think we all can agree that best-in-class communities all have these three things. Number one is that they're safe, they're self-contained. Once you're in one of our developments, you're safe. Number two is that they provide connectivity and they're fluid. The surrounding public roads and internal streets provide seamless access from many one point to another. Number three is that they're highly amenitized. Best-in-class communities have pools, water parks, water features, green space, community space, and allocated areas for fun. They improve the city. With those things in mind, it is our hope that you consider approving the Reed Ranch PD as we believe it has all of these qualities to make up a best-in-class community. We're excited to become your partners and deliver it. Separately, I'd like to further speak to the potential roadway impact fee and hopefully provide some background and insight into our request to be exempt. Before I get into the why, I do want to point out that we are only under contract to buy the land at this point and are simply representing the current landowner with hopes of getting the zoning changed and closing in a few months. At closing, we will be entering into a partnership with you guys, one that we think will be great. I think we can all agree that the DNA of a great partnership is one where both parties do what they say, and we plan to do that. It is part of our mission statement as a firm, and I'll put mine and my family's name behind that promise. We will do what we say. With that, I'll dive into the why of why we believe we should be exempt from the roadway impact fees. Number one is about two weeks ago, we were sent an email from staff clearly stating that we would be exempt from the roadway impact fees. We are asking that you all honor that correspondence and share in the promise that we are making to you to do what we say we're going to do. Number two is that we are dedicating the eastern border of our property for right-of-way, roughly two to three acres of land, that we are paying around $1 million for. And we are providing right-of-way to the north such that Blakey needs to come that way, given the eminent domain case that's happening north of us. We have also agreed to design, construct, and maintain the street that cuts our site in half to accommodate the city's master thoroughfare plan. That's the Meandering Road. Those two things, the dedication of right-of-way and the shared burden of construction for public infrastructure on our site are the two classic market offsets for roadway impact fees. And I can provide multiple active examples in other cities in Texas that are agreeing to exemptions, just like the one that we are requesting. We have, currently have one in Denton and one in Fort Worth, and I can share details of those if you guys would like. But I'll keep moving. We can jump back if needed. Next is that you could argue that because of the proposed change to the impact fees, the roadway impact fees, and them not having been adopted yet, that we are more exposed than projects that will come through the city after the vote happens because at least those groups will know what their fee burden will be. We currently have it calculated at $1.5 million, but what if we don't get an exemption and the maximum gets charged? We vote on it tonight, and then here in three months after we close, the fee changes. What if it jumps to $3 million or $5 million? One of the commissioners in P and Z argued that we should have a budget for fees like this, which we do, and he's right. But how can we budget for a fee when we don't know what it is or when it will be approved? Not a person in this room would invest in anything or buy a piece of land for their family to build a new home that came with a blank check that had to be written to the city as a part of the deal. It's impossible to budget for and, which means it's impossible to raise money for. It's an out-of-market request and one that we will likely not sign up for. My next point is what if Blakey Lane doesn't get built for three to five years, given the eminent domain issue north of our tract? The proposal would either force us to try and build without Blakey in 12 months to avoid the fee or accept the full payment for the fee and have to wait to build until the city had the required right-of-way for Blakey. Both options take away our rights as a landowner to dictate when we break ground, to execute our business plan, and bring a best-in-class community to the city of Bastrop, which is our goal. Next, if we assess the full impact fee or it, the fee changes in some way and gets increased, we'll simply just have to charge more rent, and we don't want to do that. We want to charge the mark, current market rate. The last point I want to make is that we are not requesting to be exempt from paying water and wastewater fee, impact fees. We are well aware that this project will impact roads, water, and wastewater capacities, and that the money paid out goes towards making the necessary improvements to those things. We are only requesting to be exempt from the roadway impact fees, given the roadway credits that we are contributing to meet the plans adopted by the city. We will still be fully assess the water and wastewater impact fees, which currently add up to about 3/4 of $1 million. Dedicating right-of-way, constructing the cut-through street, and paying 3/4 of $1 million in water and wastewater fees is how, is how we plan to minimize the impact to the city's infrastructure. impact to the city's infrastructure. To conclude, I want to summarize what all we have agreed to contribute to the city regarding Reed Ranch to date. Over two to three acres of right-of-way that we are paying a million dollars for and potentially more, depending on how Blakey Lane needs to run. Number two, we made the road that cuts through our site a private road with public access that will be ours to construct and maintain, even though it is simply an accommodation of you guys' master thoroughfare plan. We cut our building heights in the northeast corner at the community's request. We added numerous trees and screening in the northeast corner at the community's request. We increased setback in the northeast corner at the community's request, and we removed the connection to Jessica Place at the community's request. Once again, with the vote in a few moments and eventual closing on the land, we will hopefully be in a partnership with you guys. We feel there should be a fair trade between what we are giving versus what you all are giving. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lunsford. Prior to opening up the public hearing, do you have any questions for staff or for the developer, the representatives? Councilmember Meyer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. City manager, what is the email that he referred to?
He's referring to an email from our senior planner after a conversation with me, apparently that occurred as he was creating the staff report. He asked about impact fees and their applicability, and obviously there would be no applicability if building permits were broken ground within 12 months of that. That was skewed, that was the email that was sent. They did not get that information directly from me.
And I, you know, we've had a great relationship with staff, happy to work with them, it just, that did set an expectation, you know, under the circumstances. So that, that's just a little bit of the background there.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Crouch.
Well, that was one of my questions, so thank you for asking that and thank you for answering it, Ms. Carrillo. I've had several conversations recently with the people that live in the settlement, which is the property to the west. Can you, do you mind pulling up the map and just, so I can see the settlement and your property? And I had a couple of questions. Okay, so to the north, plan north of that drawing is the settlement is, and can you point out where the four-story buildings, are they the darker ones or the lighter roofs?
So our current plans now for, is only for one four-story building, and it's actually, if you see, is there, if you see the pool closer to Blakey Lane, it's just that building that runs the corner on the northeast section there. It's just that single building is all that we're planning right now, four stories. The wording of the PDD would allow for more of the buildings on the western side to be four stories, but that's not what the, what we're expecting, and part of the reason is there's an elevator requirement for four stories as well, so it makes the cost go up. So we're, we're not planning on making all the western buildings four stories.
Okay, I was just curious about that, and I, and I really appreciate you guys accommodating that request that came from the residential neighborhood, but I don't think we really had heard from the settlement, the, of the property. Another thing I've been asked a whole lot about is the large tree at the front of the property, and on this plan, I don't see any accommodations to try to keep that large tree there.
So that, our plan is to protect that tree, that tree that's closer to Highway 71, right? The plan's to protect it, and it might need a little bit of building sliding over, you know, we're going to comply, of course, with the city's tree protection ordinance, but also we, you know, a resident sent in a picture concerned about that tree, and we're also making a commitment to protect it, so.
Okay, so it's not shown on this map?
It's, no, that, that-
Looks like there's a sidewalk right there.
Yeah, there'll be a little bit of adjustment needed in order to-
Okay.
Do that. We, this initial drawing was before we got our tree survey, but we've asked our architect if there's room for it, and he's, we're ready to make room for it, so.
Regarding the tree, we, we've amended our site plan many, many times and paying our architects over and over and over again, so we are going to save the tree, but for the purpose of this being our 10th or so site plan to ask our architect to do, we did not move the building, there's room to move it, it'll stay there.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the question, I know it's schematic and design and that it, it can change a lot even between now and then, but I just wanted, there's been a lot of concern with that particular tree, and it is a large tree, and it just happens to be right in the middle of where you're planting some additional trees, but-
It is, it's actually right on the, the building just, I know it's not actually north, but just north of the detention pond, it's on the very corner of that building.
Yeah, so there's a plan to try to, to save that tree?
Yes, sir.
Okay, incorporate it, okay.
Yes, sir.
And then the estimated impact fee is 1.5 million, is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, that was, that was it for my questions, thank you.
And that's, that impact fee is based on the lower amount. If council decided to go with 8,600 or 8,200, whatever our amount would be that, it would go higher.
And is that on, for us to vote on tonight, is this impact fee, right?
No, no, and that's what makes, that's what makes this development difficult, it is not before you to vote on. We are not going to take it up until after the code rodeo, after November 14th and 15th, as you look at the transportation impact fee and the drainage impact fee, which will both have an impact to development. So I'm hesitant to allow you to, to take it piecemeal because it does have a 50,000-foot effect on everything, so.
Yeah, and I agree, because both things are going to be impacted by not just this development, but all, all the developments, which we know, so it's just the whole reason we're, we're adopting a road impact fee. So I, I appreciate your, the request, and we'll definitely take it into consideration because I know that there's, there's a time lag and you have to base your pro forma based on what, what you know at the time, and then we add that, then I, I get that piece of it, that it gets expensive, but we have to look at the cost to maintain new roads and old roads, so, but I appreciate the request, and I appreciate you trying to save the tree.
Councilmember Plunkett.
I mean, I just wanted to ask, you know, right now it seems like we're quibbling between 12 and 18 months. What is your anticipated, I guess whoever feels more qualified to answer? How much time, I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable giving carte blanche forever, but I mean, what kind of, what is your plan? You just say you're going to, and, you know, it is just, and it is about having building permits, so you don't have to have it complete, it's just got to be permitted, so I'm just curious, when do you feel like you would have the permits?
It's going to depend on a lot of things. The main thing that makes the math really hard right now is getting a construction loan, and if we're tied to 12 or 18 months, this is a two-phase deal, so if, if we wanted to have the roadway impact fee be zero dollars, we would need to make it one, one phase and deliver potentially 600 apartments at the same time, go get a construction loan at nine or 10% and be tied to that, and that makes it hard for us to deliver a best-in-class community, which, which was my pitch. These projects are so hard to get right. I think at P&amp;Z, there was even a joke thrown around that these are just cash cows and we're going to make out like bandits, it's not that way, it's, so much has to go right, and our profit could be a million and a half dollars. And so that's why I'm here, we have to plan accordingly, and if we're tied to a timeline, there's nothing we can do about that, we'll, we'll do our best to, to either stomach the fee or beat it, but we need to know what it is, and, and so that's our appeal tonight. But our, our request is to be exempt, just from the roadway impact fees, not the others. And the reason, it is, it is a difficult spot that we're in, but the reason we threw it in our PD, and it's up for discussion, is because of the email. I think anyone in this room, if, if we switched places and, and you got an email saying that, you would throw it in your PD immediately too, to, because I wanted, I wanted it adopted. Someone told us something, and so I wanted it to be recorded.
Okay, and so you don't, you're not-
Timeline.
Yeah, yeah.
It depends.
Sure, I understand.
If the fee's three million dollars, we're going to get to work, but it's going to be very hard for us to, for me to sell to my investment committee that we don't know the timeline and we don't know the fee. Are you okay if we close on the land? They're going to say no. And so we just need to know what it is, and if the capital market environment improves in the next 18 months, which was the recommendation from P&amp;Z, then we will move forward on phase one and get to that point and try and beat at least half of the fee-
Right.
And deliver phase two at a later date and stomach that fee. But we just need to know what-
Yeah, and obviously we would like to give you a number, you know, we would have liked to have known in, you know, September, you know, what the fee was going to be, but we're trying to be deliberate, we're trying to take the market considerations along with the capital improvement requirements that we're going to have, and we're trying to balance those two things, and, and we want to be really deliberate about it, and we want to make sure we get, you know, from people like yourself, you know, and get input from people like that so that we can make a better decision, and so I'll make another pitch to all those developers out there, please come on November 14th or whatever day that is, and-
We'll be there.
And tell us about it, because it's, this is a tough decision, and I want to make a good one.
Yes. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. So I just, in watching the P&amp;Z meeting on Thursday, Kennedy, just to be clear, they decided not to waive the fees, however extend the 12 months, which is mandatory, to 18 months, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. And also I just want to kind of back up what Kevin just said, the reason we have, you know, you might ask, why, why we don't have this fee down yet, but it's because of transparency and the way we want our citizens and developers and everyone to understand what we are doing. So I just, it's not like we're just, you know, not wanting to do anything about it, we just want to make sure everybody knows what we're doing and has input.
Thank you. I did just want to give a little background to our request. You know, I think the city's done a great job adopting the PDD ordinance, and, you know, one of the things I think that's great about these ordinances is the flexibility it provides, so that's also why, you know, we're requesting to have this in the PDD ordinance, if we believe is, you know, permissible, you know, if you, if, if it's something you're willing to consider, and, you know, in all honesty, like, it would, because of the timing issue for us, you know, it, we, we would consider other compromises such as, you know, waiver of the fee for the second phase, just, just to get a little bit of certainty, and I know you're saying other developers aren't going, getting this certainty, but we feel like because we're in it now in this planning phase, that, that's where this request is coming from. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So at the meeting, you, you were open though to a 24-month grace period?
Yes, at, at the meeting, that, you know-
You're still open to that?
Yes, we're, we're still open to that.
Okay.
I mean, it-
For the make team.
There's, there's a few different ways that, to meet in the middle, and there's timing, of course, or you get, assess the full fee. There's credit towards what we are contributing, we could value the land that we are dedicating for right-of-way, which is undecided because Blakey is undecided, but we could get an appraised value of that land or market value or what we're paying for it, plus the, the cost of construction that we're bearing as our own burden to, to put in accommodations to you guys' master thoroughfare plan. Like I said, those are the two classic offsets for roadway impact fees, and so another thing that we could continue to discuss and, and move forward with is, instead of a timeline, a calculation of our fee, what's, what's currently being proposed regarding the impact fee ordinance, the calculation of, that we came up with of 1.5, have that be our maximum, and whatever the value of the land that we're dedicating to right-of-way, we get credit for that and then we pay the difference. That's a, that's an alternative solution as well. We're just looking for some cooperation to, to help us get comfortable.
Thank you, sir. Again, prior to opening up the public hearing, is there any further questions for staff or for the developer? Councilmember Plunkett, your lights on, I'm assuming, okay. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Madam City Manager.
Yes, sir.
On the discussion about offsets for the roadway impact fee, we've not had the opportunity to have these conversations because we haven't yet adopted said fee, so it doesn't even exist, so we can't have talked about ways to offset it. But what things would you expect would be acceptable offsets to a roadway impact fee? What guidance are you going to give us in, you know, future years on this topic?
So let me pull out my crystal ball. So the first and foremost thing I want the council to remember, and the developer, as good as a neighbor as you're trying to be, the burrow is going to be on the backs of the rest of the residents, okay? We have a plan for Blakey, it has been a punch through, the developer has dedicated right-of-way, but there will still be roadway impacts, and it's either funded a portion by this development or it's funded all by the residents. Right now, our funding mechanism is general fund, it is grants, it is also EDC, but those pots are quickly drying, and so the impact fee is a way to diversify where we're going to get that money, period. Council, you guys are deliberating how much that fee should be, and we, we talked about the maximum. Ideally, the developer builds the road and turns around and dedicates it, and, and we're done, and they get their credit. In this particular case, I can see a participation contract where there is a, a portion of road construction that has to happen, because while I feel for them, they're still going to be hostage to Blakey being constructed, right? Right now, their only out is settlement. So that's not making the folks that have reached out to Councilmember Crouch happy about the traffic, and so for, there's a period of constriction there. I don't believe they're going to be done in 24 months, I mean, you can, you can tell me all you want to tell me, but I promise you, that magic ball I have, you're not going to be done in 24 months, it's just not, that's just the way the market is with labor and cost of construction and also the burrow. You might be 80% of the way getting ready to break ground, but they're not going to be complete, so we're, we're trying fast to time Blakey. What is a good offset? You know, if 50% of this development, if we gave them credit for 50% of their exaction or 40% of their exaction, whatever, I'd have to see where they came up with the value of the land that they dedicated, which would have been a requirement anyway. That's probably the best I can do, either they build it and dedicate it and we participate with some portion of cost, or we do give them fair market value for the dedication, that was air quotes for folks at home, again, give them fair market value for what they did dedicate, and contribute that toward the, whatever the exaction fee would have been for the impact fee. Those are the two most equitable ways in my mind to the residents of Bassdrop.
Yeah, I'm, I think I find myself not comfortable offering a grace period on a fee we haven't set yet.
That's, and, and that's, therein lies the pickle.
Yeah.
Therein lies the pickle. I know where you're leaning, but I know where you were leaning prior to me also giving you the womp-womp on the drainage cost.
Yeah.
And I know where you're leaning also prior to the vote being taken for the street maintenance tax. So, you know, this is a toughie, this is a super toughie.
Yeah, it's a good point, the street maintenance tax factors into this discussion as well.
No, absolutely, absolutely, because if that, if that is approved, then the funds from BDC dry up very quickly, right? And so we're moving the coconut, which pot of money are we getting the dollars from? Which again, goes to the point of there is some participation that is due, absolutely. How much? The council, the council gets to decide that. The best I could offer, the best I could offer is we give some credit for the right-of-way
Thank you, they're seeing no further discussion, it's, I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open, I have two people scheduled to speak, actually three. I have two people scheduled to speak, actually three. One of them is Mr. Lunsford, but I think he's already spoken his time. Madam City Secretary, do we have any other requests to speak?
No, Mayor.
Okay, with that being said, I have a Mr. Jeff Alborn. I hope I've said that right.
Yes, sir.
Your writing is very similar to mine.
Yes, sir. Jeff Alborn, seven four eight Moreno Court. I just don't agree with the location. That's the biggest thing. I think it's too small of a piece of property, lots of congestion going in right there. And don't get me wrong, I have no problems with apartments. This is my first home I've ever purchased. It's right here in Bastrop, thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight years of life before I was able to do so. And I did not, was not able to put fifty or eighty thousand dollars down. Luckily, I have VA benefits. And that was the only way I could financially do it. And to the property to the north, through Blakely Extension, I've only lived here a little over a year now. I think that's going to be a very long legal battle with that home or landowner. From what I've heard from locals who have lived here for twenty, thirty, forty years, it's going to be a long one in court. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Keith Alborn. Said your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Keith Alborn, Keith Alborn, two oh one Bryant. I live on the corner of Bryant and Jessica. And I'm glad to see that Jessica's been removed, but is that permanent or is that just point of conversation? If you don't get the property for Blakely, what is Plan B? Where are you going to put the traffic? I don't want to suddenly see three, four hundred cars coming out of an apartment complex down Jessica. It's a nice, long, attractive straightaway for a lot of people who are in a hurry. I've heard people saying, oh, it'd be great if we could have a backstreet to get to Lowe's. More traffic we don't want to see. There's a lot of children. There's no sidewalks on Jessica. I don't know where the kids coming out of the school now walk across the street dodging cars. Earlier on in these conversations, we were talking about affordable housing. I haven't heard yet what these apartments are going to go for. You know, you're talking a thousand dollars, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred. But looking at some of the starting salaries in Bastrop, I don't know who can afford to live there unless you've got two incomes. And I think these are going to be one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. You'd have to have at least a dual income to afford there if you ever plan on saving money to be able to buy a home. Now, has it ever been established what this affordable housing numbers are? I haven't seen anything. It would be a curious number to have. The density I'm concerned about is a lot of cars. I don't know the rationale behind a four-story building, kind of an ISO for us. Anybody living in a subdivision looks out their front porch and sees a four-story apartment building, not exactly appealing or a selling point for some time down the road if you ever want to sell your home. I haven't heard anything from the school, how they're going to be able to handle the kids that might possibly be living in this community if they're going to be able to handle the overflow. I don't know what their timeline is to add more buildings. I know there's some in conversation about another building, one for seventh graders, one for eighth. I've also heard conversations about portable school classrooms. Not a very good selling point cosmetically. If you're looking to buy a home in Bastrop and you look at the school and seeing mobile buildings for classrooms. So, thank you for your time, appreciate it. And hopefully, you've got a Plan B because I don't want to see Jessica ever considered as an opening for this subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Secretary, do we have anybody scheduled to speak?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we will now close the public hearing. I do have a question. This is not affordable housing, this is market rate, correct? Thank you, thank you. Okay, council, we've had the presentations, we've had some discussion on that. We've had the public hearing and now entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the PDD as written without the, without any traffic impact fees. I don't mean by not charging any traffic impact fees. That should be taken care of as a separate item in a later date. But the PDD, I move to approve that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch with the stipulation that the traffic impact fees not be a consideration in this motion, correct? And I have a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion?
Yes.
I have Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
So, I'd like to talk about the connection at Jessica a little bit. Madam City Manager, can you tell us about your conversations with the school in regards to sidewalks, bus traffic, right of way? Anything going on there?
Yes, so we've had conversations with the school regarding all of the developments in this area. The two schools that are there are slated to be two middle schools in the near future. And the elementary students have been moved to the Colony School, I believe it is. We've talked about a safer pedestrian path and some potential changes that would need to be made along Jessica to improve that. I shared a potential site plan which has a hike and bike trail and has some reconfiguration of Jessica to the south, right? The north side is where, I guess, you guys live in the neighborhood and to the south is where the school is. Most of the improvements would happen on that. And that includes a sidewalk, a hike and bike trail, and some other pedestrian-friendly amenities.
If Jessica, well, let's start the sentence differently. So if we build Burleson East and Reed Ranch in Bastrop and Jessica were to be opened without Blakely, without a connection to Old Austin Highway, I could envision people from nine six nine trying to use that as a way to come into downtown without crossing the highway, right?
Correct.
And that would be very ugly, I mean painfully ugly. I don't know how many ninety-degree turns there are to make that, but it's like five or six or something, you know? And the bandwidth available for pushing cars through that is not sufficient. And it would create an ugly situation for the neighborhood. So I'm not at all in favor of connecting Jessica, at least initially. But from a connectivity standpoint, if we have Blakely and we have the connection at Old Austin Highway, the connection to Jessica to what is called New Road on this map here is going to save hundreds of trips a day from Old Austin Highway or from people that would be in this neighborhood, that would be going to the shopping centers, that would be going to nine six nine for work, for other things. And I kind of feel like, I don't want to open it up initially at the building of Reed Ranch, but perhaps at the time of connection to Old Austin Highway and with the building of Blakely, that that would be the time to open it up. And I mean, I think in general for connectivity, it's kind of the right thing to do for all of our citizens. At the same time, opening it up now would be very irresponsible because of, it would create a path for people that they would take and then that would create a big mess until all these other roads are built. And so I say this because I wanted to foster discussion for, I don't know, perhaps an amendment about the opening of Jessica at a later point in time when these other connections are made. But I didn't want to just make the amendment or request without kind of talking about it a little bit.
Well, I think that's irrelevant to the Reed Ranch PDD discussion, but it is relevant to the Transportation Master Plan.
Okay.
Today, the Transportation Master Plan calls it connecting at Jessica.
Certainly.
What other folks aren't aware of is there is a connection point at Charles, too.
Yeah, several other places in the back of the neighborhood.
Yes. If the Duff property is ever to develop, the Transportation Master Plan has Charles connecting all the way through the Duff property to nine six nine as well. So there are multiple connection points that are meant to create that connectivity. Right now, we're focused on Jessica, but that's a transportation plan discussion. I think that's independent of Reed Ranch.
So why do you think it's independent of the PDD discussion? I accept that you're saying something true, but I just.
It's an offsite improvement. It's an offsite improvement. It's not even on, it's not even on their site. There is some right of way between the Blakely connection and Jessica.
And so in this particular drawing, there is a, I don't know, maybe it's a bicycle lane or, you know, something very small there. Is it conceivably inexpensive to replace that with roadway at some point in the future? Or, I just don't want to spend money twice.
No, and I wouldn't want you to either. The development would be able to come this way down Blakely and make that connection at Old Austin Highway. So that's, this is an offsite improvement. There is about, I don't know, fifteen or twenty feet of right of way that's sort of no man's land between Reed Ranch and the school property in Jessica. So this offsite improvement is pretty much irrelevant. They're going to be turning on to Blakely anyway. If this is ever opened up, again, you can't keep folks from a public roadway anyway, so.
So what I hear you saying is that we don't need to consider that current now?
No.
Yes, that is what you're saying or no?
That is, that is what I'm saying. You do not need to consider the Jessica connection today. Today, it remains closed. It will remain closed for the foreseeable future. And I do venture to say that the Duff track may be under proposed development and, you know, at some point in the future, and Charles would be opened up as well.
Yeah, okay, I'll buy that, thank you.
Well, in the same token.
Hold on, Councilmember Plunkett hit his light on earlier. Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, my question is a little bit more technical in that procedural. If we, and it's probably for Allen, if we pass the resolution as moved, does it not require a supermajority because this is not what the Planning and Zoning Commission passed? Because it's, we're altering it apparently?
We amended that to a simple majority.
Oh, we did? Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
The majority requirement is no longer imposed by ordinance.
Thank you, I forgot about that. Councilmember Crouch.
I just wanted to point out that the, there's several, this, it's still going to be a moving target as far as the drawings are concerned. So the Jessica's Place Street, the tree protection, the reconfiguration of the landscape around the large tree that's at the current house that's there now, all those things can still be modified. This isn't the final plan that's going to be presented. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but there are still modifications that can be made to this.
Correct, as we, that's the beauty of the PDD is we go into site developments and we run into, maybe it's a pography issue or drainage issue or something, we can reconfigure the building.
So the vote for the PDD is just that, just the vote to authorize the PDD so this development can happen?
Correct.
The nuts and bolts of it still has to go through the design process and final design process. And the traffic impact fee will be looked at at a later date. It won't be addressed today.
And the zoning change.
Per the motion.
And the zoning change.
And the zoning change.
Today is the zoning change.
No, today's the zoning change.
That's correct.
As part of the PDD.
That is right.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
So I, the tree discussion, I think we should amend the motion to add in the, saving the tree.
I'll amend my motion. Can we do it now? I'd like to.
Mr. City Attorney.
You accept the friendly amendment?
I need a friendly amendment, I need to vote on the question.
To add the tree, yes. I would do, I would definitely do that.
You accept that, does this, I can't even remember whose second amendment.
Sure. Councilmember Lee.
Do you accept the friendly amendment? Okay. We need to vote on the friendly amendment to include it into the motion? Okay, so we've accepted it within the original motion, okay.
I can restate it if you like.
Sure. Well, I mean, we need to have a clear understanding because we've got the discussion into Jessica. We remove that from our consideration.
Yeah, so my motion was to accept the PDD and now with a motion to make sure that the tree that's at the entrance of the, where the residential house is now, is protected and incorporated into the plan for the development.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I now have a second. Further discussion, Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, one more thing with, since this is an ordinance and we're going to have a second reading, is there a, an opportunity for you to potentially, you know, negotiate?
Sure.
A.
I'm going to ask for an appraisal. They already know that, they already wrote it down.
Figure so that, because I'm sensitive to their need to understand what their costs are going to be. So if we could, if we could do that, then that would be great. We could have it for the, for the second.
Will do.
Thank you.
All righty, seeing no further discussion. We have a motion by Councilmember Crouch and we have a second by Councilmember Lee. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes. Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to nine F. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R dash two zero two three dash one five four, approving the Animal Control Services interlocal agreement between the city of Bastrop and Bastrop County attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents providing for repealing clause and establish an effective date. Chief Stefanik.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I have for you, for your approval, the agreement for animal services between the Bastrop County Animal Shelter and the city of Bastrop. The term of this agreement is for two years, starting November first of this year and ending, it's actually going to be October thirty-first of 2025. The PowerPoint was created a couple of weeks ago. The Bastrop County Animal Shelter is the only shelter in the county. It's available to the city 24/7 and it has serviced approximately 4,177 animals in fiscal year 23. The primary change to the agreement is moving from a flat fee to a per-animal fee. In fiscal year 2022, the city took approximately 30 animals to impound. In fiscal year 23, the city had approximately 57 animal impound calls. The idea behind the per-animal charges to attempt to ensure reunification of the animal with its owner prior to bringing the animal to the shelter. The Animal Shelter advises it currently costs them $420 on average for impound and disposition. The city would pay $225 per animal for the first year and $270 per animal for the second year of the contract. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief of Councilmember Crouch? Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. So the fee is an attempt to re, to get the animal back to its owner. The fee is charged to the city, the two twenty-five and the two seventy.
It'll be two twenty-five the first year, yes, ma'am.
So if we have to take the animal to the shelter, the city pays two twenty-five?
Yes, ma'am.
If you reunite the animal with the homeowner before that, do they pay anything?
No, ma'am, because we don't take it to the shelter and don't use their services.
No, I mean, we don't charge the homeowner for.
No, ma'am.
Um, well, where do we house them while we're looking for the homeowner?
Typically, so if we have them for an extended period of time, we do bring them to the animal shelter.
Thirty days?
No, no. It basically is, extended period is anything probably over an hour, if that. Now, what we have done in the past is if we have an animal and we're attempting to make contact with the owner, they've got a tag or we're trying to facilitate, hey, we think, we know who this dog belongs to, we actually bring it back to the police department and we all hang out with the dog for the rest of the day until the animal owner comes to get it. But typically, we try to get that pet back to the owner before it goes through the process of going to the animal shelter.
Okay, I was, I was like, so if we're housing it, do we charge, are they, is the owner paying us back because we have to pay $225? But no, that $225 goes to the county at that point from us.
It does.
And the homeowner has, and we don't know what the fees are, or maybe you do, the county charges the homeowner from that point, once they get it.
It kind of depends on the circumstance. If we drop the dog off. If we drop the dog off and circumstances kind of dictate that the homeowner ends up paying, there's normally other circumstances. I can't think of one off the top of my head at the moment, but that's typically not the case. Typically, it's, we can't locate an owner, the owner has to go to the animal shelter or to pick up their dog. We pay the 225 for the services that we received at that time. The homeowner may have to pay additional fees. I'm not sure what the shelter would charge them for, but we do not charge the homeowner any, or the pet owner anything.
Anything. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Meyer.
Mine's more of a statement, since we're on the animal shelter and the animals. Please pay and neuter your animals all over, everywhere. This, you know, it's a huge problem, but if we could just pay and neuter our animals, we would have less of a problem.
Thank you, ma'am. You've heard the presentation from the chief. There's no further questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee. I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion, seeing none? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, council. We'll move on to item 9G. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-152 of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas regarding the Bastrop Central Appraisal District election voting for the 2024 Board of Directors, establishing repealing clause and providing an effective date. Madam City Secretary, is this your item?
Yes. It's your first. It's our fault it is. [laughing]. Good evening, mayor and council. This is a process from the CAD, the appraisal district, the boards, the members are up for reelection. There's three on there that have consented to being reelected. We can also add to, if we had two to add to it, or we can just elect those three, or not elect those three, it's up to council, how you would like to vote, whatever your vote is, we report it back to the appraisal district. We are allowed, I think it's 290?
192.
192 votes. I apologize for the misstatement. 192 votes as the city of Bastrop.
Steph, what it is, or council, what it is, they have, there's five open positions right now. Three board members have expressed a desire to return. There have been three additional people who have thrown their hats in the ring, two from Smithville and one from Elgin. We can vote for five, or we can vote for three, or we can vote for one. We can split 192 votes any way we want to, or evenly split amongst five people. There are six people up right now, and it is up to council on how you would like to place five people or no people. If I may, for equal representation, what we can do, the three people who are looking to return, two of them are from the Bastrop community. The three who are looking to serve on that board, two of them from Smithville, and one from Elgin, we could probably do a geographic split if we want to have five people on there and pick one from Smithville and one from, one from the Elgin area, or I'm just throwing that out as an option to y'all, and then we'll have five people to vote and divide 192 votes by those five people. Of course, it's not going to be an even vote.
You said there was two from Bastrop?
There's two from Bastrop that are looking to return. David Redd.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And Bill Archer.
I don't know why, couldn't see it on Bill Archer, but yeah, it's right there.
So what is the desire of council in this regard?
I mean, I'm good with your suggestion, one from each city.
Okay, you want to put that, and the three returning?
And the three returning.
You want to put that in form of a motion?
I make a motion that we choose one from each city, Bastrop, Smithville, and Elgin, and the three returning.
For the five, do you have a specific, one from, we had two from Smithville, which one would you prefer? It was a good try, but.
I don't know. Did we get any information on the ones returning, other than the names? I don't remember seeing anything. I mean, I think it's kind of hard without being able to read something about them. I don't want to just pick a name.
I understand.
Because we didn't get any information.
No, we did not.
Who do we have here? Jeannie and Stacy from Smithville?
Well, I will point out that currently, the three returning board members are all male, and the three people who have expressed a desire to serve are female. But all three of them are, so I don't know if that makes your decision on which two of the three.
Okay, so David Redd from Bastrop, Pamela Harkins from Elgin, and I personally would probably go with Stacy Tiner from Smithville.
So Mr. Redd, Mr. Archer.
And Pamela Harkins.
Mr. Glass, and then who, Harkins?
Harkins.
And your fifth?
Um, well, that would be.
Either Ms. Ralph or Ms. Tiner.
Oh, Tiner was who I chose, Stacy Tiner. I do have a question, though, about Glass. Is he the commissioner that's serving on the Commissioners Court for Elgin?
That is, that is the David Glass.
And he can serve on the board?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure. I saw that, and I was like, wait, I thought you couldn't serve if you were elected.
He's the commissioner for Precinct Four.
So that's my recommendation.
Okay, council, we have a motion from Councilmember Lee designating Mr. Redd, Mr. Archer, Mr. Glass, Ms. Harkins, and Ms. Tiner as our selections to go on the Central Appraisal District Board of Directors, and we can instruct that 192 votes be split between those five in whatever equitable fashion there is. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a clear second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion, seeing none? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We will move on to item 9H. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-155, City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the Public Improvement Plan Agreement with Continental Homes of Texas LP for Valverde major tract improvements. Off-site water lines attached in Exhibit A authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Your turn.
Mr. Hagerty will be presenting.
Yes. Good evening, mayor, council. Tonight, we have before us the, it's a Valverde major tract improvement for the off-site water line. It's approximately about 3,250 feet of 24-inch line that goes more or less from the middle of their tract of land south towards Highway 71, where it eventually connects into the elevated storage tank at FM 20. And here's a map of what it looks like. You can kind of, you can see the development up in the northern part of the picture here. So it connects here, and then just goes more or less straight south across 71, down the right-of-way of FM 20 to the elevated storage tank that sits pretty close to this section here. And again, it's a 24-inch pipe that will, pipe that will serve that whole Valverde master plan subdivision. There's approximately 1,650 LUEs that are on that site. And then it, the total project cost or the probable cause, cost from the engineer is close to 2.1 million, or 2.9 million, 2.19 is on there. And that includes the, everything from start to finish on that. And there's, let's see. Yep. And yeah, I think that is, that's the main overview there. I don't know, do you guys have any questions on that?
Do you have any question, Mr. Hagerty? Councilmember Crouch?
The PIP is required before the plat can be recorded. So they're essentially agreeing to install the public improvements.
There, there is a surety of 125% on that for a bond for the actual project, so we will make sure that takes place.
And the water line, the design of that water line, is it adequate for future? I know it's 24 inches, so that's a massive water line, but it's going to potentially serve more than just a Valverde tract, I'm sure.
I'm a lower city engineer.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would defer, defer to Fabiola on that.
And then that, that would accept any commercial development that may tie in to it as well, because that would include fire protection systems and, I just want to make sure.
So the water line has two multifamily tracts, and has commercial development also, as well as single family.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's sized adequately so that we don't have to go back and look at it at a later date and add a water line. And I know 24 inches is massive, but just want to make sure, because there's a lot of development.
It's sized properly for this development.
Not any additional?
I think so, but I don't know, I don't have the calculation on top of my head.
Okay. We'll be sure to look at that, Councilmember Crouch.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
So Councilperson Crouch said that we don't have to look at it. I'm kind of concerned that we may need to look at it at some point, so I was curious about the alignment of this with a proposed roadway. Under, next to, beside, above, beyond, below, between, whatever.
There is a planned extension in the Transportation Master Plan that takes 20 all the way through up the development.
Right.
You see the road through there? So that's in our Transportation Master Plan. We'll look at the, we'll look at the 24-inch. There's also an elevated storage tank proposed to the west of this development on this site. So lots of moving parts. The additional development below Valverde would be the next at question, because that's the only blank spot that's left. The colony's already fed, and then the other properties to the north of that would be on a different line.
I guess my question is, in terms of this roadway, are we putting this line to the side of its potential future location or underneath its potential future location? What's the best practice for that? And what are we doing?
They're normally underneath.
Okay, and is that what we're doing?
They're normally underneath, yes. The, what the county would prefer is that it be next to the road, so if we ever have to deal with the road, we're not having to deal with the water line. Right-of-way is just very, very, very expensive.
Okay.
So often, we get just the minimum that's required. We would need, you know, one and a half times that amount to make sure those alignments, those things are outside of the pavement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other question, Mr. Hagerty? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Second.
I have a second with Councilmember Crouch, seeing no further discussion. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes. We are now moving to the executive session. Item 9A has been pulled from our, 10A, I'm sorry, has been pulled from our agenda. Item 10B, City Council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.087 to seek the advice of legal counsel and for deliberation regarding a potential Chapter 38 agreement regarding economic development incentives with the height Lost Pines Resort. Item 10C, City Council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding a development agreement for the project known as the Hill located at Highway 95 and Arena Drive. Item 10D, City Council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and discuss professional engineering contract matters and potential acquisitions of real estate related to the wastewater treatment plant number three project and other matters. Item 10E, City Council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to code, I'm sorry, pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to seek advice of legal counsel regarding potential submitted, potential, petition submitted by Lanzola MHP4LPS1 for the removal of the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction of approximately 643.5 acres of land located in the Joseph Rogers survey, abstract number 55, Bastrop County, Texas. Item 10F, City Council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the procurement of real estate interests related to the Lost Pines Art Center. It is 8:16. We are in executive session. It is 9:52. We have gone out of executive session, now back in regular session. On item 10A was pulled. Item 10B, would there be no action? 10C, no action. 10D, no action. 10F, no action. Do I have a motion on 10E?
I move to approve Resolution R-2023-157.
I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch. I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any discussion, seeing none? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion.
Second.
From Councilmember Crouch. I have a second from some, from Councilmember Lee. We are adjourned.